Okay. Good morning, everybody. I would like to thank you and after saying good morning, welcome you to the second day of our discussions. It's also the last day. And I really count on everybody that we try to do our best, as it is customary in UNESCO, to reach consensual agreement. The intention here, the situation is complex out there. UNESCO since yesterday and all the time, we are working as a team. Of course, we do have differences of view sometimes, but it's very normal. And you cannot expect less from an international organization like ours. Therefore, it's very, very normal. But we are very used to discussing and reaching consensus. It's very important that we reach consensus and not try to put ourselves in a difficult position. So I really count on everybody. And I have no doubt that we will be able to make good progress with a bit of goodwill, knowing that all we need here is consensus. We need to reach consensus. Okay, yesterday we stopped because there was a point of order. First of all, let me tell you that we have the quorum now, based on the information we receive of those that have locked in. And therefore, we are proceeding with the meeting. We stopped yesterday because there was a point of order from the delegation, from the French delegation. And therefore, we should begin with this point of order before proceeding any further. I see that the French delegation is... La delegation de la France est déjà là.
The French delegation is already here. If we could give them the floor, that... Madam Ambassador, you have the floor for your point of order. I think that was a point of order yesterday? Mister Chairman. Am I... Can you hear me? Yes, you have the floor, Your Excellency. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Good morning to everyone. Yesterday, you projected on the screen just before we lifted the session, there were various proposals that directly concerned the member states. There had been a very useful facilitation process. And you thanked the facilitators and for the very important commitment made by certain delegations, who we also thank. The facilitators having indicated that their facilitation did not lead to a consensus, which we regret, we are no longer in an informal process, which was that of facilitation, but rather in a formal procedure, which is that of an extraordinary executive board. And from that standpoint, the examination of the texts which you are proposing to us gives rise to certain difficulties. There are difficulties, first of all, because the text which you put on the screen yesterday is not on the official list of council document, a board document. And therefore, does not correspond to a proposal as defined by our rules of procedure. The only documents we can formally examine in session, it would be six X slash EX slash two, which has not been put on the screen. A second difficulty, Mister Chairman, concerning the possibility of having negotiations on a draft decision in session. Let us recall the very clear written commitment we got from the executive board under your chairing in its fourth meeting on May 25th, 2020. Let me remind you of the key recommendations made in that fourth bureau meeting, the minutes which you were kind enough to share with all delegations. Quote, "It is necessary to arrive at a consensus on decisions before the session," unquote. The last point, and the last reason for which we had a point of order. You indicated yesterday that one of the proposals coming from member states had already been the subject of a fairly far-ranging agreement. But we need to recall that only the executive board is competent to make decisions and to say whether a text is, in fact, the subject of an agreement, be it broad or otherwise. So we would recall also that the authors of the different proposals will to make progress for our board. As you have reminded us, Mister Chairman, we are a multilateral organization. Viewpoints will diverge. And our goal is obviously to bring them together, and that under your chairmanship. We very warmly welcome all of that. We see that one group of countries, including France, had also put forth proposals which were not projected on the screen yesterday. Nonetheless, all of the contributions by member states are now very important elements for our ongoing debate, which should be led calmly, seriously, and methodically. By way of conclusion, Mister Chairman, at a time when our board is thinking about how to adapt its procedures for a crisis situation, we have more than ever before need, above all, for transparency. That was mentioned by many member states yesterday and also by the facilitators. Transparency in terms of what we say, transparency in terms of what we do. And from that standpoint, our delegation wishes to go on believing in the written commitment made by the executive board I just mentioned, which said that if there was no prior consensus, we would not be able to negotiate or decide anything virtually. We saw clearly yesterday that roughly fifteen delegations who wanted to take the floor had great technical difficulties to do so. And it's very hard for us how to imagine we might calmly negotiate anything at all in these circumstances. We also, more than ever before, need great rigor and seriousness in the full application of our rules of procedure. This was, I think, mentioned by every single delegation who spoke yesterday. It's perfectly normal for us to think things out together and the possible way of adapting ourselves to a crisis context. Nonetheless, these rules are the very basis that we have all freely and in our sovereignty agreed upon and which the executive board must go on following and respecting. Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Thank you, Your Excellency. I shall now, in a few seconds' time, give the floor to everyone who wishes to take it. But I think that before that... Well, people who want to take the floor can already show us online and raise their hand online so we can see who does wish to take the floor. But while we're waiting, I have a brief reaction to what the ambassador has just said. I think she has flagged some important points. And it's member states who should react, above all. I would just like to clarify that what I was trying to do yesterday is that we can try to take account of the facilitators' discussions because I think the facilitators did excellent work. And practically the majority, if not each speaker, congratulated them on this work, which was far from easy. We think that the work that they did was an excellent basis. And I felt that there were very important elements of that work, which we might, which might have helped us to make progress. Because our goal here is to try to show, not to one another, but to the international community and to the countries that are part of UNESCO, that we are working in spite of the difficulties that we have, as we see in practically the entire UN system, that we are also here side by side with the member states. And I think it's our collective interest that we make progress. And it was in that context that I simply wanted to start. But given the objection that we heard, I will now leave to the member states the possibility to react and see if at the end of this process, we might try to arrive at a consensus decision. I am fairly optimistic that thanks to the work done by facilitators, we're not too far from that. For the time being, we're on point two of EX2. And we'll also be able to clarify what, Her Excellency, the French ambassador has just said concerning the Bureau. I have a report here which says that it would be necessary to arrive at a consensus on the decision before the session. Necessary. That's what the Bureau recommended. And the French declaration has just reiterated that the decision-making body is the executive board. The Bureau makes recommendations to the chair. And the chair, on that basis, may accept the recommendations made by the Bureau. Normally, the Bureau and the chair are one and the same to the extent that once a Bureau has made a recommendation, the chair, in the normal run of events, takes that decision on board. That being said, we need to know that the Bureau is not there to decide. It's the executive board that decides. But we have that possibility now because we are meeting as the board. My goal was not necessarily to react to what the French delegation has just said, but simply to clarify what I had to say yesterday. For the time being, I will take everything off the screen and I will listen to the member states. And I hope that with these recommendations that will be full of wisdom, we will find a way out, as we are with the floor. Bangladesh, you have the floor, please.
Yes, I think I... Myself. Good morning, Mister Chair. Thank you very much. And good morning to all our colleagues whom I'm, we are not seeing. It's a disappointment certainly to be looking at your own self when you're speaking. We would certainly have liked to see around and exchange our gestures and good wishes. But I would like to convey our very good wishes to all the members who are, and all who are in this virtual room. Now, last evening, when you put up the document on for the consideration of the member states, you had also pointed out a very important fact, a couple of important fact. And I would like to reiterate that we also had made in our intervention those points. First of all, that there is a clear desire of the membership to start working. You have just pointed out the whole UN system has reactivated or adapted itself to this virtual reality. Now, if you look at what is happening in New York, we see that important decisions are being taken. Lend the resolutions are being drafted online. I mean, in virtual setup. And here we are, three months, four months down the line. We have not even been able to figure out how we should be working. I mean, this is absolutely disappointing. I mean, it doesn't reflect very well either on the membership nor on the secretary itself to not have been able to create this environment that will allow us to work continuously. Now, coming back to the point of order is, and I would like to react to that because we think that this is very important, that we create that environment, we create that structure, we create that methods of work that would allow us to move forward. The distinguished ambassador of France has very rightly pointed out to the procedural aspect. The rules of procedures are very important and are the guiding principle for our work. It is true, and I fully agree with the distinguished ambassador of France, that the document that you have referred to last evening does not exist in a formal term. But the fact is that this, there was a process through which there was an effort to reach a consensus on the two decisions of the two agenda items that we are dealing with in this board. Now, on point of item number two, we also had, not only on two, on three as well. We had facilitated, we had commended our facilitators to have done an excellent and extraordinarily difficult work to come to an extent that we are almost close to reaching a consensus. As far as item two is concerned. Now, there could be one way that I suppose we can move forward. The decision suggested in the document, a three-point decision. The practice here is that once the decision, again, the member states are open to either accept or propose amendment and then discuss. So what I would recommend you consider is, since this work has been led very efficiently, effectively, by the two facilitators, we can request the facilitator to submit it formally to whatever agreement we have reached so far. Not agreement per se, but whatever the shape of the DR has taken, that DR be put up and placed formally. And we acknowledge here, when you are referring to the annex, this annex could be proposed. I believe that the annex was first drafted and suggested by a distinguished ambassador of Saint Lucia. So that could be part of the proposed amendment to the draft decision that has been put. Here, I would seek your guidance and also request our facilitator, if they would consider it to place it formally for the consideration of the board. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you. Yesterday, I gave to Bangladesh today while I was waiting from the secretariat the list of countries that wanted to speak yesterday. But I think I have it now. And therefore, I would like to read out the countries that I have on the list, including from yesterday where we stopped. On that list, I have Saint Lucia, Poland, Dominican Republic, Hungary, Morocco, Spain now, Finland, Burundi, and Jordan. This is the list that I have from yesterday, including this morning. I know that the other countries I'm coming, those that I have mentioned, I will give them the floor, beginning by Saint Lucia. You have the floor, please. As soon as Saint Lucia can connect, please let me know. We'll proceed with the other ones. Poland, if you are with us, you may take the floor, please, Excellency. We're waiting for Saint Lucia to be connected.
Thank you, Mister Chairperson.
Saint Lucia is there. If you don't mind, madam, we have her now. If you don't mind, okay, Poland, thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Mister Chair, actually, I had asked for the floor yesterday because I was a little lost about what was happening. And I wanted to know whether there was a motion to close the debate on this item because I'm expecting that we have a debate on this item. And now that I have heard the point of order of the distinguished ambassador of France, I have to say that in the Bureau, it is true that what we said that, and I'm going to read it in English, is that there is a need to reach a consensus on the decisions before the sessions. A need is not an obligation and is not a decision. What we all agree on is that we will not be deciding anything if there is no consensus. And of course, we will not be voting on decisions. This is a gentleman's agreement for this session that we will all abide with. But I really fail to understand why we cannot try to go out of this session with something. And on this, I completely agree with the ambassador of Bangladesh. Really, I can't say things better than he did. I think it would be simply unacceptable to call for a session that is supposed to equip us with a minimum tool for allowing us to work online if we have to do it in the months to come and leave the session with nothing agreed among us, even if it's just to take note of something. Now, concerning the legality of DRs and amendments, I'm sorry, but the facilitators did table with you, Mister Chair, text that is the result of their facilitation. And I have to say that I was very surprised yesterday that these texts were not distributed. Because if they are not part of our work, it means that all the work done is gonna disappear since this text is nowhere tabled in this session. For me, these two DRs by the facilitators on both items were tabled when they were sent to you, Mister Chairman. And I think that we can try to get something out of it by the end of the session. Of course, by consensus, I insist on this. This is not something we're going back on. But I think that it is not reasonable to try and prevent us from getting something out of this session and say that it has been useful for something. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I know that Morocco is down on the list, but there is something else. I asked Morocco yesterday to clarify because my understanding is that the facilitator did submit me the documents, including the last proposed decision, in which there was no agreement. The facilitators also submitted to me on this point, because I asked them what was the consensus. They submitted to me that the first consensual document for a group is the consensual document from the African group. These two documents were submitted. So I would like Morocco, if you don't mind, to clarify this question that we had yesterday. But since Morocco was not in, I even asked for Switzerland also, but they couldn't speak. So I would like to give the floor to Morocco. I know that Morocco also raised their hand. It might be because the delegation has other comments. But I would like if he could clarify this point from yesterday. My understanding is that they have submitted officially. And if there is no objection to the room, we could also, as people intervene, we could consider this submission as part of the elements that could help us in advancing in our discussion. Okay, I would like to give the floor to Morocco because of that question from yesterday. And since Morocco will have the floor, they might also add if they have additional comments. The ambassador from Morocco, is he, is he connected? No? Okay. If Morocco comes back, the delegation could clarify this question from yesterday. Now I give the floor to Poland. We cannot hear very well. Can you try close, please? This microphone?
And now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Good morning to all. Mister Chairperson, I asked for the floor yesterday because we can hear during the opening debate very clearly that for procedural reasons, many delegations considered it as impossible to continue drafting during the virtual meeting. That was also one of the agreed points before the session. On the other hand, some delegations expressed a very strong conviction that this session should result in adoption of decisions under item two and three. The only possible way to have these two positions reconciled is the adoption of DRs as they were proposed to the executive board by the secretariat without amendments. That is what... Let us avoid some exhausting deliberations and use this time to have a good debate on substantial issues and mainly the consequences of COVID-19 crisis for the UNESCO activities and therefore make this session successful. But there is something even more important here than rationality, what I could call requirements of equity. We could see yesterday that many delegations met some technical difficulties and that they could not fully be fully involved in the work of the board during this virtual meeting. This is not right that during the very first meeting of this kind, which such a number of participants and such a number of formal rules, some obstacles can, could occur. And it doesn't matter why, but this is a simple fact that not all members could participate on equal terms and be involved properly in the work of the board. They communicated this to us and we cannot ignore it and exclude some of the members because of technical problems. Your colleagues, we have four regular sessions ahead of us. And how could we, how could we be reliable partners for each other? And how we can build cooperation at this board when we start from this kind of disrespect and go to the drafting? So in this context, let me notice also another thing that during the simulation, we had two very important features, mainly the list of participants and the list of participants which ask for the floor. So I believe that that's what we missed during this virtual session in terms of transparency of the work of executive board. And that all has nothing to do with the excellent work and commitment of our two facilitators or the quality of the text they were proposed. It is not a question if the summary is good or not good based for far the work in normal situation. But we don't have a normal situation. And personally, I'm convinced that ambassadors of Morocco and Switzerland would be able to lead us to consensus, but they didn't have enough time, at least regarding item three. Because in case of item two, the situation has just changed during the consultation process. We have received two new documents from the secretariat. Firstly, information that is possible to organize to a national station in presence. That of course will not be the traditional session, but the closest version of it, which we can have in current situation. So there is no urgent need to decide on the modalities of the virtual regular session. Secondly, the secretariat responding to the require of some delegations to have more detailed explanation how rules of procedure apply in case of virtual session prepared addendum to the document six XXII. And we should thank the representative of Saint Lucia for inspiring UNESCO secretariat in this regard. To conclude, if we care about rules of mutual respect and if we search for consensus, the only option seems to be to build it around the DRs proposed by the secretariat without further drafting. And Poland is ready to join consensus on this document six XXII with addendum, if that is aware of other member states as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, just to guide our discussion, I will just ask everybody that first we concentrate now on item two, who will have the time for item three and the information document from the secretariat. This is just to orient our discussion. From yesterday also, I ask for my excuse, I think the Russian Federation has the floor. And I would like now to recognize the Russian Federation. They asked for from yesterday. Excellency? The floor yesterday. The floor yesterday. Now it's fine. We can see you now. We can hear you.
Yes, but there is some misunderstanding because we didn't ask the floor yesterday.
Okay, that's fine, sir. I received a note from the secretariat. Okay, Dominican Republic, you have the floor, please. Dominican Republic? Okay. Hungary? Hungary? They're there? They're connected? Okay.
Thank you, Chairperson. I don't mean to prolong the discussion today unnecessarily, but for the record, I need to brief raise an issue that is a matter of principle for my delegation and is actually closely related to our working methods during confinement and in fact, a very good illustration of why we need 100% clarity on technical aspects of our working methods. You yourself, Chairman, yesterday made a reference to the outcome of the vote of the 13th of May regarding the special session of the Executive Board, recalling that the overwhelming majority of members did not object to the special session taking place virtually. After you circulated the results of the vote, the very next day, I asked for clarification why Hungary's vote was not taken into account. And with the kind help of your secretariat, we quickly found out that our vote, for some reason, was diverted by the spam filter of the UNESCO mailing server. Consequently, we were promised a quick correction of the result of the vote. Look at this background. I am very grateful for your letter that I received last week in response to my request for correction, Chairman, in which you informed me that the investigation of this issue involving the competent technical staff of the secretariat is in progress. I must admit, however, that almost a month after this incident and having relatively clear picture of the situation, I was hoping for a quick resolution of this issue. Of course, I do not intend to have a discussion today on this, but I would highly appreciate if I could get at least some indication from the secretariat of the foreseen timeline of this procedure of the correction of the vote. I do apologize to raise this issue at the plenary of the Executive Board, but the omission of our vote or of any other member of the Executive Board is a matter of principle for us. And now, a month after the incident, a growing concern as well. Even if our vote actually doesn't change the conclusion of the vote at all as we voted with the overwhelming majority. Thank you, colleagues, for your patience. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for this intervention. But I just have to clarify, I believe, that as clearly stated here, yes, I did respond officially that I'm asking the secretariat to find out and clarify to me what is the technical difficulty. I also received the email that was sent by your delegation. You sent it to me. If the issue is on the technical difficulties, I was prepared with the committee that is helping me to count as 50 the number of countries that have voted. But until now, I don't have the technical explanation. But as we finish this meeting, I will check with the secretariat to know exactly what was the technical difficulty. But if the issue was on the technical difficulties, the content of your correspondence is in favor of the meeting. And therefore, we should have 50 member states. I hope that will be clarified to me following this meeting. And I will send you an official communication confirming that we have instead of 49, 50 out of 53 in favor of the meeting. But we could talk this if you agree also. I will immediately react to it as soon as we finish our meeting. Now, Morocco, I see that the ambassador, Monsieur l'ambassadeur, vous avez la parole.
Your Excellency, the ambassador of Morocco, you have the floor. I hope that you can hear us and that we can hear you. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me? Can you hear me in Paris? Yes, we can. Please continue. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. I would just like to greet all colleagues who are currently online and to speak to Item 2 of our agenda and the document that was transmitted to you. This was a result of the consultations held by the two facilitators with virtually all member states of the Executive Board. Once again, as I mentioned yesterday, the Africa Group proposed a document based on a consensus of the group that really facilitated our work. Now, as for the document submitted for Saint Lucia, it seemed to us that there were similarities. And so the document that we submitted to you is really a sort of a fusion or a mix of the documents from the Africa Group and from Saint Lucia. We simply added in to the Africa Group document the points from the Saint Lucia document that we felt could attract a consensus. So the document that you, Chair, have before you as a chairperson is a document that is based on the Africa Group text with additions inspired by the Saint Lucia document. Now, we do feel that there is very, very broad agreement on these contributions with a consensus looming on the horizon. And so it seemed to us until Saturday evening that a consensus on that document could be possible. So that's what I would have to say concerning Item 2 on the agenda. Thank you very much, Your Excellency.
To this, what Morocco has just said, when we will try to reach a consensus. For now, I would like to listen to Spain. Spain, you have the floor, please.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Yes, well, Mr. President, I'm sure that we all in this organization, in this executive council, we all want the best for UNESCO. The problem is that we deserve in how to achieve that goal. The famous English saying, "One month meat is another month's poison", couldn't be clearer in this discussion. We completely agree with you when you say that we have different points of view and this is our job, try to find a common denominator. Because we all want this efficient UNESCO in the field and in the programs and for all the countries, we really think that we have to believe a document that the secretariat presented on Friday, the famous 6XX4.0 info saying that there is a real possibility of having a presidential, 209 executive council meeting. But yesterday, we had some astonishing arguments. Well, one for the Spanish delegation from the Swiss facilitator with this sometime argument that he didn't have mandate not to put the Spanish proposal, simply because it was very different from the other ones. But second, what you said, Mr. President, that you don't have any guarantee that this document from the secretariat about the presidential meeting in July is real. But then, that is if I say that you, Mr. President, I don't have any guarantee that you are real. Maybe you are a virtual president. Maybe you are a virtual person. I mean, we cannot... We have to have clear basis and we have to have stone marks. And the first one is what the secretariat said was. We think that we all believe that a presidential executive board meeting is much better than a virtual executive board meeting. And the secretariat says that we can have that in July. That is why, and if not, we could always postpone it to September. We have enough time in the year to have two presidential meetings in September or in and in December. So saying this, I want to say clearly that Spain, to put it in a nutshell, as far as CXEX2 is concerned, we can only accept a consensus as proposed recently by Poland to the document presented by the secretariat or to the document that has been presented by many countries from France, Germany, Argentina, Albania, Dominican Republic, Italy, Italy, the Netherlands. That is to say, a document just saying that we take note basically of this problem and we will solve it in the future when it is necessary, but not now. And second, as far as to the virtual preparatory group on 11 and 12 June, that for the Spanish delegation is breaking all the rules of procedure and we won't participate in that. For us, that is just a masquerade that we have to avoid. It will be only in languages. There is no guarantee of any kind of technical and legal procedures. So we cannot admit it. For us, it's a Trojan horse that you introduce to introduce these different meetings when they are not necessary and when the secretariat is saying that we don't need them for the moment. If in the future we need them, then let's try to have the rule of procedure. But remember, Mr. President, and you all, what happened with the Trojan horse? The Trojan horse meant the destruction of Troy. So okay, Mr. President, don't be the adder cater when he explained "Delenda est cara UNESCO". Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Finland, you have the floor, please. Yes, please, you have the floor, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Well, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I fully agree that we need a proactive approach to advance and I agree with many points that have been said here. But however, several of the points raised by France and also Poland are very relevant in my view. There was a reason why the Bureau noted that there is a need to reach consensus on the decisions before the sessions. We have seen over the past day that it is indeed very difficult to carry out the negotiation in this format. Poland also rightly pointed to problems of equal treatment. I also think there are substantive questions and issues that require clarification. First, it's of course important to know which proposal of the African Group we are talking about exactly. I understand this was the proposal sent by the African Group on 3rd June to facilitators. Then secondly, we noted that there is a paragraph in that proposal, the rule 30.3 and 30.4, that may limit the right of observers to participate in the sessions. And this certainly is one of the points that would require further scrutiny. But overall, I really think quite strongly that considering the difficulties relating to negotiating in this context, it might be much more realistic to simply use the draft decisions proposed by the secretariat as suggested by Poland. Thank you.
Thank you. Burundi, Excellence, vous avez la parole.
Burundi, Your Excellency, you have the floor. Burundi has the floor.
Merci, Monsieur.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me? Yes, we hear you very clearly. Thank you. Chairperson, I had asked for the floor yesterday in order to react on this issue of Item 2. Because as I understand it, this is really the key item on our agenda for this special session. A special session which is being held under very extraordinary circumstances, circumstances of a crisis, in fact. So we really need to take a look at the way we work under such circumstances. Now, since yesterday and also taking into consideration the vote that had been held, we need to commit ourselves to making sure that the activities of UNESCO will continue within the framework of the work of other international organizations, many of which are continuing to work in virtual means. And we can separate ourselves from that. So thank you very much, the facilitators, who have done everything possible to come up with something that could be a good basis for a consensus for our organization to be able to continue to work. Now, when we talk about working methods, well, we already have the working methods set out for normal circumstances. And it seems to me that when we work virtually, when we meet virtually, we simply need to adapt the working methods to the new situation. And thinking of the session at the end of June, I think it would be prudent to take advantage of all means possible in order that at the end of this session, we come up with a document about our working methods in order that if the situation remains unchanged, we will be able to be sure that the session can nevertheless take place. Now, while promoting and pleading for consensus, I do believe that the adaptation of these methods will be necessary. And I think this can be done on a consensual basis. But in any event, I really believe that we must meet in June. If it can be done in a live meeting, then through a virtual meeting. Now, perhaps the situation in the host country will improve by the end of June. But we don't know what will happen in other states. I mean, the pandemic is evolving differently depending on the country. So for the next session, some members having to come to a live meeting from outside France may not be able to do so. So I think that we need to take advantage of that session in order to adapt our methods. And then, we will be well-prepared for other cases that may arise subsequently in the future. I mean, we don't want that to happen, but nobody wanted the coronavirus to crop up either. So we could be better prepared for the future. In short, I am in favor... In short, I am in favor of reaching a consensus on the adaptation of the current working methods to virtual communication. Other organizations have managed to do this. Communication is possible, and I think that those representing their states in the Executive Board who could talk to people representing their state in other organizations. I mean, if those practices can be possible elsewhere, why not at UNESCO? Each member state should ask itself that question and come up with the right answer. The success of these methods would be in the interest of all the member states we represent. So I'm pleading in favor of a consensus. But in closing, I have a question to put. The consensus, legally speaking, it really means what? I mean, is it just a principle or does it have a legal definition? So with the efforts of the facilitators, we have a document that could be a basis for discussion, ending in a consensus. Thank you, Chairperson. Thank you very much. Thank you. I can see that Burundi has now put a legal question that could assist us in the rest of our debate. I mean, could the legal advisor respond to that? And perhaps, I hope the legal advisor is following this meeting and could in fact respond to the question raised, the legal question raised by Burundi. So I'll give the legal advisor the floor, if that is possible. Indeed, indeed, Chairperson. Good day to you, good day to Executive Board members. I believe you can hear me. Now, Chairperson, I understand that the question had to do with the concept of consensus within the context of executive board meetings. Well, I don't want to interpret the question of Burundi, so perhaps Burundi could take the floor and put the question in very clear terms, and then the legal advisor could respond. I think they would be very useful for the rest of our debate. So Burundi, could you come back online, please, and put the question in very clear terms to the legal advisor and we could hear his answer? Burundi has the floor for that purpose. Burundi, but you need to make a request to speak, and once you do that, you're now on the list, that's very good now, you should be able to take the floor. Please, Burundi.
Sinon, Monsieur le Président.
If not, Chairperson, if we don't have Burundi... Ah, no, no, Burundi is connected. So let's give the floor to Burundi first, Your Excellency, Ambassador. Thank you, Chairperson. I put the question to try to understand whether consensus is some sort of a concept or principle that has been adopted by UNESCO, or is it really a legal concept? I mean, perhaps we need to go to a vote, I don't know. But what is really the status of the concept of consensus? Because I'm not a lawyer. Well, the legal advisor, you have the floor. Thank you very much, Chairperson, and I thank His Excellency, the Ambassador of Burundi, for making the question crystal clear. Now, the rules of procedure of the Executive Board do not refer expressis verbis to the concept of consensus, unlike the rules of procedure of the General Conference where consensus is mentioned as such. But it is a longstanding practice of the Executive Board to take its decisions by consensus, and this implies that the Chairperson, on the occasion of a decision to be taken by consensus, the Chair asks those participating in the meeting whether they are prepared to take a decision without proceeding to a vote, and if there's no objections to that, then it is considered that the decision is adopted by consensus. Now, this is not the same thing as unanimity. Unanimity suggests that a vote is actually held with all members present and voting, voting in favor of the decision, and then it is adopted unanimously. I hope that makes it clear. Yes, I think that's been understood by all and sundry, says the Chairperson. So I think we could now thank the legal advisor for making that clear. And the next speaker is Jordan. Jordan has the...
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, Excellency. Yes, you have the floor.
Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, yes, please.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
As you have rightly said, Mr. Chair, that having differences in views and opinions is normal in such an organization like our organization, UNESCO. Therefore, we see that any decision would need enough time for enough exchange of views and deliberations. We're not in a rush. We have two days to brainstorm and to prepare for the next session and the session after. I actually agree with the distinguished delegate from Saint Lucia when she confirmed that we don't need a vote during the session and any decision should be adopted by only consensus. I also support the argument which is relevant to what we're seeing by the distinguished ambassador of France and the distinguished ambassador of Poland among other colleagues as well. I think we need here, Mr. Chair, clarification. If the proposal of the facilitators was officially submitted or not, we stress again that any proposal that requires action or decision-making process during this session or any future similar session would require enough consultation with member states in accordance with the relevant rules of procedure. Therefore, as we said yesterday, we propose to create an interseional working group that can really prepare well for the sessions to come. It can also take place from now until we reach the date of the 209, and it can continue actually during the Executive Board Session 209 to prepare for the next one. We so much appreciate the opinion of the legal advisor, but we need also to understand the legality of the proposals that they were submitted. Let me just put things again briefly. I think there is almost a landslide opinion that we don't need vote during this session, and the online negotiation would not really take us the path that we all wanted to go. I think that the only solution to adopt the documents by consensus is to go to the draft resolutions or the DRs that were initially proposed by the secretariat. These are the only texts, as I see, that were officially tabled. So I would rely on your wisdom, Mr. President, Chair, to lead us to consensus, and we don't need any fragmentation or any further division in this highly esteemed board. Thank you.
Thank you, Excellency. Not well taken. Believe me, we all want consensus, we will try to, we will reach consensus, we will try. But before giving the floor, I think the delegate had just said something about the opinion of the legal advisor. I think we should clarify that the legal advisor is not supposed to give opinion, I understand, but he is to clarify the legal aspects. And on that point, you also have raised an issue, a legal question. If the legal advisor understands that as an item on legal issue, not the interpretation of the rule, but the legal clarification, I could give the floor to the legal advisor to clarify the question raised by Jordan. Maybe the legal advisor can come later on because there might be other questions, he can just take note, but if we have another legal issue, he will just take both of them at the same time. So not every time we have a legal question, we'll give him the floor. But this question might need some clarification when we give the legal advisor the floor next. But I have Turkey on my list that wants to take the floor. You have the floor, Excellency.
Mr. Chairperson, we have followed the discussions very carefully, and we would like to start at another point of the discussion. We would like first to raise the question concerning the 209th session, the regular session of the Executive Board. We have been waiting for a very long time for the distribution of the document X4 concerning the holding of the 209th session in Presidentia. For us, this document was directly linked to our negotiations and to our decision finding concerning the document X2 on working methods. Unfortunately, the document X4 has been distributed very late, almost at the end of our negotiations process, so that it was difficult for us to have a well-informed decision finding also on the document X2. Now we have examined the document X4 concerning the holding of the meeting in Presidentia end of June very carefully. Our opinion is, yes, there is a certain possibility for holding the 209th session in Presidentia, but as stated also in that document, we have to see how the situation evolves until end of June. But what is already clear now for the moment is that even if we have a session in Presidentia, it will be not the sessions like we had one year ago, it will be a session with certain restrictions. First of all, it is mentioned in the document that the secretariat proposes due to the sanitary situation that member states have only one representative in the room. This will be the first restriction. And the second restriction, which we haven't read in that form in the document, but in our opinion it was important to take this into account in a document of an intergovernmental organization, it was concerning the participation from capitals. Even if we can have a meeting in Presidentia end of June, we know that some delegations or some member states will not have the possibility to send head of delegations or other participants from their capitals. That's for sure at the moment. So we would like to know at this point whether all member states have already agreed to these restricted conditions. Means namely to have only one participant in the room, representative in the room, and secondly, to have no participants from the capitals. Have we already agreed on these restrictions? This is important because if yes, if no member states object to these conditions, to have no participation from the capitals, then we will have another discussion today. But if no, if there are member states which can already say that they don't agree to these conditions, then we have to find a solution during this special session for our working methods. Otherwise, we will discover end of June that we cannot hold a meeting in Presidentia because not all member states agree to these new conditions of holding a meeting in Presidentia. Secondly, Mr. Chairperson, we heard some colleagues that they proposed maybe to have one session in autumn, to have the 209th session and 210th session together maybe. We don't have the details, but there were some proposals going in that direction. We would like to remind Rule 1 of the rules of procedures, saying that the Executive Board shall, as a general rule, hold two regular sessions per year. So in our opinion, since rules of procedures have a really high priority for us, all our suggestions, all our proposals have to be in compliance with the rules of procedures. That means we have follow also this rule to have two sessions, to guarantee that we can have two regular sessions in this year. The second, the last point is, sorry, the last point is, what we need... Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We have to know, we have also heard that we can maybe have a session in October and another session in September. We have already know the situation that we have a lot of canceled and postponed meetings. So, but we don't have the information of our new schedule for the autumn, which will be informed, which will be very important for our decision finding and very useful. So we need also to have, in our opinion, a schedule for our meetings, for the canceled and postponed meetings in autumn. We already know that there is a World Heritage Committee meeting scheduled for December. We already know that there is an Intangible Heritage meeting scheduled for November. We have the Executive Board scheduled for October. We have IHP, IPDC, IFAP, and so on. So in order to have a well-informed decision finding, we have also to see the schedule of postponed meetings and of canceled meetings. Back to the first point, Mr. Chairperson, we see it as very necessary to discuss at this stage already on the point whether all member states agree to have the regular session in Presidentia, a possible regular session in Presidentia, under these restricted conditions. If yes, we will have another discussion. If no, we have to find a way forward during this special session. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. As you see, I would like to give the floor to all the delegates to speak as long as they want, because I think the issues are important. But I will only ask your indulgence to try to limit your intervention so that everybody can have the chance to intervene. The time is not necessarily in favor of our discussions. I will now recognize the Philippines. Dominican... Dominican Republic was also on the list, but I'm still awaiting the, okay, yes, you have the floor. I think we cannot hear. I think you have your microphone, but we cannot hear. Now, while we're waiting for the Philippines, I would like to ask the Secretariat, which list should I follow? Is it the one on the screen or the one that I have here?
The second.
The same?
The same.
Okay, good. If it is the one that I have here, Kenya too, yes, it's the same. Now, unfortunately, we can see but cannot hear the Philippines intervention. We could see you, sir, but we cannot hear you. Well, we will try to come back. I really apologize. We will come back to the Philippines because we can see you, but I cannot hear you. But to gain time, I will give the floor to Italy. Let me see. In order not to have an open-ended list, let's try to make sure that we have everybody and I would like to close the list. I will first of all, Italy, sorry there. Okay, I will listen to Italy, then I will come back to what I want to say. Italy, you have the floor, please.
Merci, Monsieur le Président. Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me very well? Well, good morning and good morning, dear colleagues. Thank you for having made this meeting possible despite all of the problems that we're encountering. I think that, like many other delegates, it's a priority to guarantee that the Executive Board remains functional in this very important period. That's why, given the technical limits of an online session and the impossibility of holding negotiations online, well, as other delegations have said, we need a previous consensus. Well, that is the same opinion that came from the bureau meeting and that was mentioned by several colleagues. So we regret that this consensus hasn't been found despite all the efforts made by the Secretariat and the commitment of all the delegates, who really provided some very excellent contributions, ones that were very useful to guide our discussion. But as other colleagues have already said, for example, Finland or Poland and France, there are difficulties if we can negotiate in an online situation. And there are also difficulties from a formal point of view. The only text we have before us is the text presented by the Secretariat. And we have to take that as a starting point, that is, as a reference for our discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I was saying before this intervention that I would like now to close the list and I will read the countries that I have on the screen. And after that, we will, I will ask whether any other country wants to intervene. After that, I will then close the list so that we can advance and try to conclude on this point. Now I will, I'm just reading now, not giving the floor. I have Germany, Dominican Republic, Kenya, Egypt, I think I have Kenya twice, Kenya, Togo, San Lucia, Brazil, Venezuela, and China. Now, this is the list that I have. Is there any other member state that? Okay, they are telling me that we also have Russia, Argentina, Pakistan, Equatorial Guinea, and Serbia. Keep writing, keep writing, please. If there is any other country, I'm trying to close the list. Please raise your hand who will take note. Prepare me the list, I will read it. Okay, now we are about to close the list. And I think it will be fair to read one more time, Secretariat, all the member states that I have are on the list so that we can give them the floor. I will close the floor and please, after that, we should try to conclude. Now, Secretariat can, I will read the first one, the one that I can see on the screen. Anyway, I already mentioned them up to China, Republic of Korea, Equatorial Guinea, Russia, Pakistan, Cuba, Grenada, Albania, and the Philippines. Philippines, Ethiopia, United Arab Emirates, Benin, Madagascar, Tunisia, Saudi Arabia, Japan, Indonesia is coming again, Indonesia, okay, and Indonesia. No, it's up to Japan. I don't see Indonesia. Is Indonesia in? Is Indonesia in? I think we'll clarify Indonesia, I think it's in also, no? Okay, it's up to Japan. What I have that have raised the hand. Okay. Indonesia, I will accept if there is a clarification on the chat, but on the screen, I don't see Indonesia raising the hand.
Raising the hand.
Okay, they have already taken the floor. So it's up to, what was the last country I mentioned? Because I cannot see on the screen? No. No, no, no. Before Indonesia, which country?
Before Indonesia.
Japan, okay.
We did raise our hand, but we thought we were at the end of the list and not now in this speaking order.
You have heard the list. I'm now going to close this list.
Yes, we.
Indonesia is included. Indonesia is included at the end.
Yes, at the end.
Okay, okay. Indonesia is included at the end.
Yes.
Okay, we will give you the floor at the end. So now I'm closing the list. After closing this list, please, we will not give the floor unless if it is a point of order because we will try to conclude. Thank you. The list is closed. Now, can you go back so that I start calling the countries, please? Now I begin with Germany. You have the floor, Excellency.
Dear Mr. President, dear colleagues, I do not want to abuse your patience any longer and what I have been saying yesterday is still relevant today. First of all, I want to praise again the good reaction, Mr. President, to giving us from informal meeting of the members of the Executive Board the 17th of April. I think we have shown very timely that we are able to react to this crisis, that we are able to convene in an informal meeting and we can discuss questions member states are interested to. If I compare what we have done the 17th April with other matters taken by other bodies of the United Nations, I think we have not to, we don't have to be discreet because the Security Council in New York, I've spoken with my colleague in New York the other day, they have been meeting informally only as well. No decision have been taken. And very few organs of the United Nations, World Health Assembly, for instance, or the World Food Programme in Rome, could meet with, in a virtual form, and be able to be in possession to make decisions. So I think we should not stay behind them by always saying that we are not able to do this. Thanks to you, Mr. President, we have done this very timely, the 17th April, in the midst of a crisis where we all have been in the confinement and we could show that we act. This was an informal meeting. Now we are in a formal meeting. As you know, Mr. President, we have been in favor of this formal meeting. We have asked, all of us, and we have given a written statement and we have explained that we are in favor of this formal meeting, this formal session, extraordinary virtual session, and unfortunately, you have taken our letter as abstention. The only point we wanted to make was that other countries who might have a problem with language regime should have taken the various. I'm very lucky that none of the other groups like Chinese, Russian, Arab, or Spanish have made this point and we are able to do this today in the two language regime. This was the only reason why we didn't say no without any explanation and wanted to make this explanation because I think this is very important to do. Now we have this formal meeting today, even it's an extraordinary meeting, it's a formal meeting, and we can't have within the formal meeting official negotiations to find a decision or consensus. The only, and we see that obviously it's not possible as we have this technical problems which the security tries to overcome, but still we have it. And so we are bound to the propositions which have been tabled by the Secretariat as tougher solutions. And if we can find consensus, I would be very much in favor to decide on consensus on this DR tabled by the Secretariat. I want to reiterate what we have said and written beforehand and what the distinguished Ambassador Jordan had said before me. We are still thinking that an international working group was a very good idea to open new possibilities, how we can organize ourselves for the 209th and as you rightly pointed out, even for the 210th session. On the timetable of the 209th or 210th, I'm very open. Turkey said we can do both of them in autumn. The Secretary told us we can have one end of June, beginning of July in real form. I'm very open to both solutions. I think the regulation interior gives us the two possibilities to do one in July and one in October or one in September and one in December. We are very open to that. But I think it's very important to have this international working group which can in a way continue the work, to facilitate us and we thank them yesterday, the ambassadors from Switzerland and from Morocco yesterday started. And we could put this in a better line to find a solution to these problems. Now we are in this formal meeting and now we should seize the time we have today for discussions on the content. This is what we should do now and why we should convene and not to speak only about procedural questions. Thank you very much.
Dominican Republic. You have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excellencies, good morning. Bearing in mind the work made by the delegations of Switzerland and Morocco, as well as the efforts made by the African group to bring us a concrete proposal on EDN6X2, we believe that this framework is a proposition that responds to the scenario we found ourselves in. Highlighting what the President said, we must concentrate our efforts to work on the basis of the work already provided, examine it, and try to adjust it and adapt it to our needs. We would prefer this path since we consider it seems the easiest one to reach an agreement. However, we acknowledge the fact that inequalities and difficulties may arise from this virtual framework, but we must keep trying to enhance and develop this new working system whilst polishing it. We firmly believe that a consensus can be reached by the end of this meeting and we count on everyone's collaboration to do so. To finish, Mr. President, and excuse my bad English, we would like to clarify that our delegation made few calculations and found that Room 1 can host three delegates per member state having two meters' distance between each. Therefore, we can host a presidential meeting taking into consideration sanitary measures. Thank you, thank you for your rotation.
Thank you to you and I didn't say the same thing when Germany finished, I also thanked the ambassador. Now Egypt, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Chairman, in a spirit of responsibility and solidarity, we are in your hands to work with you and the Executive Board membership, namely on the African DR, which was a very consensual document, whether in the African group or as far as the feedback we received from the facilitators. Mr. Chairman, yesterday, Egypt talked about solidarity and the fact that solidarity should be universal. I'm afraid we are seeing that solidarity is still more regional than universal and we are talking about the UNESCO exception. I'm afraid, as His Excellency, the Ambassador of Bangladesh said, it reflects very badly on us, membership and Secretariat. This UNESCO exception, I hope, will not be with us for long. And for those who wish so, there is a certain responsibility that goes along with this. Mr. Chairman, yesterday, WHO in a press conference indicated that the situation of COVID-19 worldwide is getting worse. And I can only but agree with what has been mentioned by the delegation of Turkey. Because if we don't equip ourselves with this adaptation of our working methods, we will be once more going to be even more exceptional and we will not be meeting maybe for a year or so. Mr. Chairman, 49 or 50 countries asked for this session and accepted its agenda. And I think that deciding not even to try is a very negative message we are sending to the international community, to the UN system, to our countries and to our people as well. Failure in adopting a simple adaptation of our rules of procedures in light of such a crisis is really an unfortunate situation, especially if the argument is that we had a gentleman agreement. I'm afraid a gentleman agreement leading to blocking the organization is something that is, to me, is unprecedented. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we believe that in light of the fact that we have been debating since March online and negotiating, that we should be at least trying, out of responsibility, out of solidarity, trying to work, especially that we have a document that seems quite consensual, which is the African DR. We believe that adopting the African DR is something that is really very possible. Maybe not. This is up to the membership to decide. And I would kindly ask you to, and ask the delegation of Kenya, if they wish to present it to the membership so that we see if we could achieve a consensus on that document. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The good thing is that Kenya is the next country. So as I'm giving the floor to Kenya, could you please also answer to the question from Egypt by clarifying the consensual document? But when we get to Ethiopia, we'll also ask the same to Ethiopia. But Kenya, could you please clarify the consensual document? And then we will continue with the other African countries that want to intervene. Kenya, you have the floor, please. Kenya, can you raise your hand again? Maybe that can help. Can Kenya raise their hand again? Those that are looking at the chat, please let me know if she comes in.
Good morning.
Morning, Excellency. We can hear you now.
Oh, thank you very much. Allow me, Mr. Chairman, to refer to Kenya's appreciation for your efforts in making us arrive at a consensus. I want to agree with my dear colleagues that that is the way to go. And we will try to avoid a vote as much as possible. Now, I come into, there was a point of clarification which was raised by the distinguished Ambassador of Finland. And I think by got him very correctly is that he wanted a clarification on the document that was proposed by the African group. Therefore, I'll try to really make that clarification only to help us arrive at a consensus on this agenda item. Now, we were very pleased yesterday to note that very many delegations did emphasize three important points of cooperation, solidarity and innovation. Now, Kenya therefore intends to positively contribute to these efforts. Mr. Chair, it is also the spirit that underpins the proposals that was made by the African group, which really Kenya supports. Now, we took into consideration the proposals made by all member states and in particular, the affirmations that the Executive Board must be able to contribute to shaping UNESCO's actions in terms of crisis, both now and in future. As we mentioned yesterday, several UN organizations and governing organs have already found modalities to continue with their work and make decisions under the current circumstances, which we hope will not be for much longer. The existing rules and procedures that we have already indeed contain the solutions. The issue is therefore to see how best these rules can be adapted to a virtual session. The African group, with this background in mind, brought up a document which the facilitators considered together with other proposals. And the table that is outlined, Mr. Chairman, outlines the applicability of the existing rules of procedure of the board to virtual meetings. There is nothing new that was introduced into the proposed table. And I don't want to go too much into too much detail of the table itself, but that is exactly the spirit of it. Now, Kenya is therefore of the opinion that the proposal, which was annexed to the document circulated by the co-facilitators as a consensual position based on the African group document is a good basis towards a common effort to advance the work of the Executive Board. We therefore, in conclusion, call all member states to support the African group application for virtual meetings, not just for this time or this meeting, but for prosperity. Now, before I conclude, let me just perhaps reemphasize two areas so that we can, hopefully, we agree on the way forward. Now, I think it's very, very clear to this meeting that we've all agreed that it's possible that we will have a virtual meeting in future. Nobody knows what the future will hold in as far as COVID is concerned. So I think we've agreed to that. I think the problem area is, you know, the content of it. We haven't agreed on the consensus on the document itself. And I think what I would like to propose in conclusion is, which document are we adapting today, Mr. Chairman? So that at least that is one step forward. And I think the next one is we need to agree on the timing. When exactly should we have these rules ready for us to adapt? Because I see within the next one hour, we need to tackle these two big issues. I thank you, Mr. Chair.
As I said, I still have the list that I have read to all member states. After listening to Kenya now, of course, I have to give the right, I have to use the opportunity to all the member states to intervene. But I would like, if as we proceed, we could, particularly for the secretariat and also the mediators, to get ready with what we can call now the African proposal, because it's the only proposal so far that had a consensus of the whole electoral group. But of course, I will give the floor to everybody. That document was submitted to me officially by the facilitators. And Morocco has already said that. I think Switzerland can also confirm. I have it officially. And maybe, maybe we could use it here, but I will listen to all the member states. What Kenya has also said is true. I mean, I'm looking at the time. We still have two items that are very important, the impact of COVID. And we also have the INF document from the Director General concerning the next session of the Executive Board. We are really pressed by the time. I don't know if the delegation will want that we try. We try, because I'm feeling that, I mean, I don't want to risk my conclusion now because there are still many member states that want to intervene. But I would like to ask if one of these member states could also at least support the fact that we start looking at something that could have a consensus, knowing that we here all want consensual agreement. We are not going to propose necessarily things that will divide us. We want consensus. And we have something that can help us to move into that direction. If most of the intervenants that are coming could at least allow the Chair to try to move on a consensual decision, that will be extremely helpful. But I cannot stop them from intervening. I can only ask if they would like us, given the time that is given and given the importance of the two other items that we still have, I would really ask if all that wants to intervene now could authorize the Chair to try to come up. We have the African, so far on this item, is a group of fourteen member states. It's the African group. I think this is a very good basis to try to see whether the other electoral group could also accept this consensus. But again, I'm on your hands. Those that are taking the floor now, please, I hope you will address that issue, whether we could move to try to see if we can have a consensus and really give good time to the other very, very important items that we have in the agenda. Haven't said that. I will call the next country, waiting for your support or not, whether we could try to move on a consensual basis on a proposal that the Chair would like to explain to all of you based on the negotiation. I have to give the floor to Togo, and I will continue with the list, waiting for any country that would like to help us in this direction. Togo, you have the floor, please.
Mr. President, I would like to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The possibility of holding a second session virtually. We feel that any obstacle that might come up is the nature that we have to find a solution that will give equal chances to everyone to participate. That's why we are pleased about the secretariat's proposal to hold a presidential meeting. And we hope that this will happen when we have better news from the host country and elsewhere. That said, Mr. Chairman, for some months now, much work has been done to fill the gap stemming from the nonexistence of measures allowing the board to go on working in a period of crisis. And this work now happily exists, which means that we need to get it approved and keep it in reserve for other difficult times which may yet occur. We would therefore suggest, to follow up on what Kenya said, that the special session discuss the Africa Group's proposal to have consensus adoption. Thank you.
On this issue, after listening to Togo, I would like to plead to all member states that I have already put on the list, that I have no right not to give you the floor. But I would like to ask you, could you, considering that we have a very important subject, which is the impact of COVID, and we really need to give some time to this subject? We also have the report, which is extremely important from the Director General on the 209th session. I would like to plead to all of you whether at this stage, we could try to have a decision that is consensual. The proposal from Africa is a consensual proposal. Can we try to turn to that and then come back to the floor? Now, now next I have San Lucia. Before giving to San Lucia, if all the countries that are on the list any objects to the proposal that is being made by the Chair, in the sense that we try to look at a decision that is consensual, if anyone objects to that, please raise a point of order. If you don't raise the point of order, I will understand that you are giving me the opportunity to try to see whether we can have a consensus. We all agree that what we want is a consensual agreement. And here we have a very good piece for having a consensual agreement. The second thing is that, as everybody has said, we must ensure that we are respecting the rules and regulations of UNESCO. We heard Kenya saying, nothing, nothing in the proposal touches the rule of regulation, nothing. And then, so basically, that is a possibility that it works. But I see that, they just told me that now, France has raised a point of order. So I will give the floor to France. I take it, let me see who else. Argentina, I presume that is the same sense. If these two member states, if the issue is, I have to give them the floor now for the point of order. Depending on what they will say, I will always have the choice of coming to let all the member states intervene. But then we have to, I have Germany also point of order. I understand, let me see how many countries say point of order, which I can understand that they don't want necessarily the Chair to move into trying to have a consensus. And then I will give them the floor. All the ones that don't want the Chair to discuss the consensual agreement, please raise your hand. I will have all the member states' names. I will mention them, and then I will give them the floor. All the member states that they don't want to discuss the consensual agreement based on the proposal from African group, please raise your hand, point of order. I will read them now. And I think, is it still coming? Ah, okay. Now, I have the list. If it is to reply to my question, these are the lists. Maybe they will explain themselves of the countries that are not necessarily in favor to proceed further on this question of the agreement based on the proposal that has been consensual by the African group. Now, I will read the list, and these member states can then take the floor. Those that have raised the point of order are France, Argentina, Germany, Brazil, Spain, Italy, Poland, Finland. Anyone that is in conformity with trying to have a consensual agreement should not raise the point of order. It's only those that are not in conformity with the proposal, in supporting the proposal from the African group for consensual agreement. I think, it's finished, no? Okay. I can now close the list of all these countries that are. I mentioned Finland as the last one also. Which one? And Republic of Korea. Now, I want to close the list of all the countries that do not want us to move into the consensual agreement based on the proposal that has been agreed upon by the African group. So I'm closing that list. Republic of Korea. I think I have read it, and everybody knows which countries are. Now, I will give the floor. No, no. I give the floor now to France, point of order. France, Madame, Excellence, vous avez la parole?
You have the floor, Madam, Excellency, please.
La France, Sylvie?
France, please, for point of order.
I think Argentina can take the floor. Is France is there? Attends, I think France is coming. So can we give a few seconds so that, yes? Okay, Excellence?
Here you are. You have the floor, Excellency. Mr. Chairman, a big thank you for all the work you have been doing since yesterday, chairing the group. We cannot accept that you ask who is in favor of the consensus and who's against it. We're in favor of the consensus firstly. Secondly, you are presenting the African group document as a consensus document. Two things. First of all, this document has not been put on the table. We requested this morning that we wanted to know if it was going to be officially presented or not for the time being. It has not. It has not been. We would ask it to be officially presented in that case. Then, secondly, it represents a consensus of the African group and not the executive board, and that's exactly what we discussed this morning. Thirdly, we ourselves have, a certain number of countries presented other proposals that no one has discussed, and which you have not mentioned, Mr. Chairman. Yet, they exist, and they have the merit not just of existing but of representing the viewpoints of a certain number of member states who have spoken this morning. So we would request that those proposals also be mentioned. That's it, really. A large number of member states have said, and on technicalities, you've said yourself, I can quote you, that we are struggling with technicalities. When you have the floor, we have problems with how this all works online. At present, online performance does not allow us to have negotiations, and that is what we would wish to see debated this morning. And we would wish, you said you are our chair, you must represent the viewpoints of all member states or at least facilitate the discussion between them and not give favor to the viewpoint of one group of members over any other.
I need to clarify, as I told you yesterday, the chairperson does not have a position. The chairperson is not in favor of anything. The chairperson did not impose this meeting. We have this meeting, including Hungary, because there are fifty member states that they asked for the meeting. All I'm trying to do is to listen to the majority and try to summarize. The attempt we are trying to do now, I'm just trying to collect, because somebody who should try to summarize. If my summary is not correct, I stand to be corrected. But I thought I heard from the interventions, from the report, from the facilitators, that the only group that presented a consensual agreement was the African group. And I wanted to use our setting to base a consensual agreement, because African group is about fourteen, I think, member states. I just wanted to base on what the group is saying. But if my reading of what the group is saying is not correct, please do not mention that it is the chair. I have no position to take here. My opinion is not what counts here. What counts is what you want, is not the chair, is the member states, and we just want to give the opportunity. Please, the chair does not have opinion, it is not Executive Board and the chair. I'm just trying to represent and to talk based on what I'm hearing from everybody, and at the moment that it doesn't represent that, I stand to be corrected. Thank you very much. I give the floor to Argentina. Argentina?
Oui. Oui, oui.
Can you hear me? Yes, we hear you fine, Your Excellency. I should say, I've been a diplomat for forty years, and this reminds me of the very first one I went to for negotiations on Law of the Sea. And in that conference, my work was basically to run after documents, to ask my colleagues what we were talking about, what was the point we were discussing right now, and I understood nothing at all. And then, over time, I understood what we were talking about, and obviously, we're very familiar with the document presented by the African group, and Argentina is not against these documents. But this document, like the others we've seen, were prepared informally. The only document we really have on the table today are the documents of the provisional agenda, and those are the documents which were sent to capitals with very little advance notice. The Executive Board is not an informal working party. Before the reform of its charter, perhaps we might have said or thought that, but today we are working as delegates of countries, and I need to consult my authorities. And that means all the ministries concerned, the National Committee, and then give my opinion. How can we negotiate a document that is not formally known to us? And that's where I don't agree. I'm not against the document, but there's not a consensus. A consensus has been shown by the African group. We need to be able to study the documents to be able to say yes or no. You also mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the word majority. The majority has nothing to do with the consensus. A consensus is an absence of effective opposition, and here there are voices saying no, not saying no to the document, but no to the consensus on this document. We could get to a general consensus, but there is opposition, and the opposition concerns the lack of time to consult the capitals of each country and to make the necessary decisions. That's why we flagged a point of order. We're not opposed, but we have not had the necessary time, and this document is not really on the table. We congratulate the African group. It is a good document, but we cannot make a decision on this basis. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Germany, please. Germany? Okay.
Merci beaucoup, Monsieur le Président, chers collègues.
Very much, Mr. Chairman, dear colleagues. Once again, my excuses for taking, apologies for taking the floor, but I'm afraid that this point of order was necessary. We are obviously all in favor of consensus. The very basis of UNESCO is consensus. It's a way in which we stand out from all other international organizations of the United Nations family or even internationally, generally speaking. We need to try to find a consensus, that is our responsibility, and as the Argentine ambassador has just very clearly said, a consensus is not a majority. Those are two quite different things. I welcome the fact that the African group has been able to find a consensus. That's already quite a lot. That's excellent for the African group, which is also not a stranger to internal divisions. But it is not yet a consensus which the Executive Board has arrived at. We have to absolutely avoid dividing the board, and that risk, I fear, exists. As the French ambassador just said, we also, together with many other countries, have proposed, I mentioned just now, and I quoted the Jordanian ambassador, we proposed this intercession working group, and we haven't discussed it yet. And I think there are many of our friends would agree with that idea, but we would have to discuss it. Here, the African document has not been officially put on the table, and we cannot simply propose it like that so as to find a consensus. We have to avoid dividing the board, and I will repeat what I just said, we need at least to start to find a way to go on working during this COVID-19 crisis. That's what we need to do now, and that's the signal we need to send to the rest of the world. Otherwise, these discussions will just be about internal regulations. Thank you.
We are learning that, thank you, Excellency. We are learning that many member states are having a parallel discussion on the chat, and there are questions and answers on the chat. Please, let's say that there is only one meeting where we are all participating. If any member state has a question, please ask the question here so that every other member state can hear it, and the proper reply will be given by either to the legal advisor, to the secretariat. Let's do it not on the chat, but here, we are on the meeting, official meeting of the Executive Board. So please, I would like to ask the collaboration of everybody that we don't have two or three parallel meetings. This is the meeting, and this is the forum, and we are giving the floor to everybody on this meeting. Please do not create a parallel meeting on the side. Haven't say that. We will continue with the list. I just want to remind everybody once again that the chairperson does not have a position. So when you are addressing, please address to the Executive Board and to the member states of UNESCO. As you continue intervening, I will also appreciate if you could say not only the objection, but also how do we move on this item so that we can move to the next item. So please give your objection, but also say how should we move forward? And you address that to the member state and not necessarily to the chair. As a chair, I would just try to have a summary at the end. That's my job, nothing more. Brazil, you have the floor, Excellency. I understand that Brazil did not ask the, is not a point of order for the case of Brazil, and therefore I will go to Spain. I know Brazil asked the floor, but he didn't ask for the point of order. I think that's what I understand. Is it a point of order? Yes, I understand, Brazil, I believe is a point of order. That's what they are telling me now. If it's a point of order, please take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you listen to me?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to thank you for your efforts in conducting this meeting, and all my colleagues that have participated, are participating, and we have been following very closely these discussions. Mr. President, we want to tell you that what we have...
Excuse me, Brazil, sorry for interrupting. They are calling my attention that those that call for the point of order are not reacting. May I give the floor to Russia and maybe to the legal advisor to clarify that?
I have, I have request for a point of order.
Ah, okay. After Brazil, I would like to ask Russia, because what they are asking now, because they are saying that it's not a point of order, and then I will also give the floor to the legal advisor to clarify. It's not to stop, it's just to make sure that we all are on the same wavelength. Brazil, sorry for this. Please take the floor. I'll give the Russia and then the legal advisor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much. We understand, Mr. President, that what we have discussed here is a very confusing process. In our perspective, there is no rush to look at these issues that may impact in our rules of procedure, because we are going to have a presidential meeting at the end of the month. On the other side, because of that, we do not favor at this stage, we do not encourage any proposals that goes in the sense of reviewing rules of procedure of the Executive Board. I just want also to remind you, Mr. President, that although we welcome very much the document, consensual document by the African group, that we, Brazil, we have also presented a consensual document, which is a cross-board document, because we have several delegations of several areas, that has not been mentioned, and this is also a document that could be used as possibly, a possible document for go-forward. Our proposal, and it has been reiterated by Germany, and it has been reiterated by Jordan, is the idea that we can work with all these documents in an intercessional group to see exactly where we stand and how we can move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. As I said before, these comments are addressed to the Executive Board and not the chair. The chair doesn't have a position, please. Now, I will give the floor to Russia, because Russia is questioning this point of order, and after Russia, I would like to, the legal advisor, to clarify us the understanding of a point of order and what is expected. Russia, you have the floor. It will be followed by the legal advisor, please. Russia, Russian Federation.
Mr. Chairman, do you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please take the floor.
Just to answer your question, we wanted just for the sake of clarity to make a distinction, and you can ask a legal advisor about it, about the difference between the point of order and the substantial speech. We think that this debate gives the opportunity to everyone to speak out, but there has to be a clear difference. The point of order is a point of order, and the speech on substance is a speech on substance. Thank you, and I asked you the floor, exactly on the substance. So I will take the floor when you give it to me according to your list. Thank you.
Okay. I will listen to the legal advisor, and based on the recommendation, we might decide to continue with the list if the comments are on the substance, and if it is based on the clarification, we will see how to proceed. The legal advisor, please take the floor and clarify us. The legal advisor? He's coming? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Sorry, I was, I was online and then got locked out. In reply to your question, Mr. Chair, points of order are governed by rule...
We don't hear you very well. I think you are far from the microphone. Oh, yes, thank you.
My apologies. I start again, and my apologies. Mr. Chair, I'm sorry I was disconnected before, but I will, in reply to your question, points of order are governed by Rule 39 of the Rules of Procedure of the Executive Board, which read as follows, and I will quote, "During the discussion of any matter, a member may raise a point of order, and the point of order shall be immediately decided by the chairperson. An appeal may be made against the ruling of the chairperson. It shall be put to the vote immediately, and the chairperson's ruling shall stand unless overruled by a majority of members present and voting," end of quote. The Rules of Procedure do not contain a definition of what a point of order is, but a predecessor of mine in 2001, at the 161st session of the board, provided the following discussion, which reflects not only the practice of the Executive Board but also that of the General Conference and other governing bodies of the United Nations. He said that points of order are raised to ask the chairperson to use his or her powers under the Rules of Procedure regarding the manner in which the business of the Executive Board is being conducted. Their purpose is to draw the attention of the chairperson to a misuse of the Rules of Procedure or the improper conduct of a debate, and they should be distinguished with procedural motions. I should add that they should also indeed be distinguished with the substantive debate. Therefore, to recapitulate, Mr. Chair, and to conclude, the rule that governs is Rule 39. Any member may raise a point of order, and the point of order shall be immediately decided by the chairperson and is subject to appeal. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, legal advisor, for this very clear explanation, but I would like to add one more, ask one more question, based on the intervention from France and the countries that follows. They are questioning the fact that we tried to use a text that was notable, but it is a text that was submitted by the facilitator. that was notable, but it is a text that was submitted by the facilitators. If can the chairman accept the text that was submitted to him or her by the facilitators, will this be a violation of the existing rules? Yes or no? Legal advisor, I hope you are with us? The legal advisor? He’s no longer here?
Yes, yes, I’m here, Mr. Chair.
Can you please clarify us before I give the floor to the rest of the member state?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and my apologies. I was waiting for the floor to be given to me. Mr. Chair, with regard to your question, my understanding is that indeed document 6XEX2, together with the draft decision, was circulated and it contains a draft decisions. With regard to the other proposals, I am not aware whether they have been circulated or not. The colleagues from GBS may be able to provide an answer in that regard. With regard to your question in addition, I would refer to rule 34 of the rules of procedure, which reads as follows and which is entitled “Texts of Proposals” and it reads as follows: “At the request of any member supported by two other members, discussion of any substantive motion, resolution or amendment shall be suspended until the text is circulated in the working languages to all members present.” End of quote. This is the only rule I can find at this stage which would apply to the current situation. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Sorry, Mr. Legal Advisor. I think the question that was raised by the distinguished delegate from France is extremely important. You know that the bureau agreed to establish or create or to appoint two facilitators and that decision was approved by the chairperson. We circulated and I think there was an agreement that we have two facilitators. We have listened to all the member states here that they appreciate the work that they did and these two facilitators have submitted their work officially to the chairperson. I repeat my legal question based on the objection that has been raised. The documents that have been submitted to the chairperson and circulated to all member state, could they be used as the basis for proceeding with the work? That’s the legal question and I think it is a very important question from France and we need clarification before proceeding because if from the legal point of view, this submission from the facilitators cannot be used, then there is a point of order there. But if we can use them, we also want to know because we don’t want to do something that is against our existing rules. I think it’s very important to clarify because on this item, the only thing I have now, apart from the official document submitted by the secretariat, it goes without saying that these are the official documents, so there is no question about that. The question is about the additional document that was supposed to come following because if we created two facilitators is because there was no consensus on the initial document that we had. Now, can we accept their submission as a document that could be used to permit the Executive Board to come to a consensus? That’s the legal question and it’s difficult for me to move forward because the whole document I have here now to be able to walk is the submission from the facilitators. But if I cannot use this document based on whatever interpretation of the rules, then we have to go back to square one and I don’t know. We’ll see how we proceed from there. Please, we need a legal clarification on that issue.
Thank you very much for that clarification, Mr. Chair. And in reply to your question, first of all, on the question of what is the precise status of the documents, I would refer to my colleagues from GBS since they are in charge of the circulation of documents. I’m not aware of that point.
No, legal advisor, legal advisor, I’m not asking about circulation. I’m asking a legal question. If you want me, I can repeat the legal question. Are you saying that...
I understood your question.
Are you saying that GBS will reply to the legal questions and not you? I can give them the floor, but I have a legal question and I think it’s a point of order raised by France. I consider that question very important because we cannot be using... If we are... If I understood what France says and I think supported by the other countries, we have to know whether we can legally use this document. I’m not talking about circulating. I’m talking about legal, legal aspect. So if it’s not you, then who should we ask about the legality of the question?
You should indeed and I am of course available to provide a reply to the legal question.
Yes.
However, what I mentioned is that there’s a factual element on which I don’t know, which I refer to others.
When the member state... When the member state will have other question, we will come to anyone from the secretariat. At this particular moment, we need just clarification on the legal issue. Then we will deal about the other issues. Can you please reply to the legal question so that we can know how to move forward? Because it is a very important point of order raised by France and supported by others. I think it’s important before proceeding that you give us your view and then member state will ask question to any secretariat staff after that, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. With regard to your question, the document I understand is not a document... If we take a document that has not been circulated, the board... The document has not been circulated as an official document of the board. The one may decide to take that as a basis for its consideration. However, rule 34 provides that with respect to the texts of proposals, that at the request of any member supported by two other members, discussion on any substantive motion, resolution or amendment, that would include a draft decision, shall be suspended until the text is circulated in the working languages to all members of presence. So if that were the situation, then the consideration should be suspended. I believe this replies to your question, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay. I needed that clarification because I will have to give the floor to all the other member states and I think we now know the objection and also we have the legal explanation. I see Argentina that is raising a point of order. Now, I don’t understand what point of order can be because we have the point of order raised on how we wanted to proceed. Now, this point of order, I don’t know if it is a point of order of a point of order. So I really don’t know because at this stage, we could consider that the point of order that was raised it could have been a point of order or substantive issue. I feel like with the intervention from... The point of order raised by France, supported by other countries and the explanation of the legal advisors, it’s difficult to proceed before giving the floor to now all the member states because the legal advisor said the Executive Board may and now this is... This is... This is an issue of the member state the member state have heard. Now, I have no other choice at this stage but to let the list go and we all know the consequences. It’s about 12. We’ll stop at 1, come back at 3 and finish by 6. So I’m at your hands. It’s the decision of the Executive Board. As I said, it’s not the chairperson. You decide. You tell what you want. You send the message you want to send and I will only try to summarize. And if my summary is not in conformity, I stand to be corrected so that I have a summary that represent really the view of the member states. Now, I would like to give the floor to those that are on the list, but Argentina is insisting as a point of order. I understand that all the member will understand that I have to give the floor to Argentina on the point of order. So Argentina, please take the floor.
Oui, merci le Président. Vous m’entendez?
Je vous entends très bien.
Can you hear me, Chair? Yes, I hear you very well. Thank you very much. Indeed, it is a point of order and a very clear point of order. And it has to do with the way that you’re conducting the negotiations. We cannot accept that a member of the secretariat should take a position on anything. I mean, the legal advisor has been very clear. There are two rules, rule 39, rule 34, that we must follow. And he also added this interpretation back from 2009. And with your insistence to obtain an opinion from the legal advisor, you put the secretariat in a very awkward situation. You cannot base any decisions on the personal opinion of a civil servant of the United Nations. He gave us at his legal advice concerning the application of rules 39 and 34 and if we want any clarification of the point of order that came formally, that’s up to you. But you put us in a very awkward situation and why? Because we are being asked to see whether or not we agree with the opinion of the African group. But this is not a document that was formally distributed and that’s why we cannot take a decision. So chairperson, please take a decision yourself concerning the application of rules 39 and 34 as redoubted by the legal advisor. Thank you for that in advance.
Okay. I agree. I know that there are others that are raising the point. Actually, what we tried to do... You remember that at the beginning, we were trying to have a consensus... Well, I tried to have a consensus on the basis of a text. A point of order was raised by the delegation from France. I think that it’s pertinent for me to not to continue a decision of the chair on that text because the point of order is relevant. At the same time, by the way, let’s not try to place this on the chair. It is not the chair, I keep insisting. Let’s not try to turn the argument on the chair. If I do not represent correctly what the majority is saying, I stand to be corrected and what is important is what the Executive Board decides. Now, as the... I think as it has been requested, I will try to understand based on what the legal advisor is saying. As the chair, before I decide, it was important for me to listen to the legal advisor on the doubt that I have in my mind before deciding. So I think I cannot be blamed for trying to understand the clarification from the legal advisor. Now that I have it, I’m clear. It’s not to put any secretariat on the spot. Let’s not try to use that language. I think things are moving correctly. No need... You know, we will get used to... We will be able to reach a consensual agreement. Now, I take the point of order from France and therefore I also take the recommendation from the legal advisor in the sense that it is up to the Executive Board. So haven’t say that I have no other choice but to give the floor now to the Executive Board, to all the member states because the objection is a very pertinent one. So I will give the floor on the substantive discussion and if the member state, they want to also go into what has been objected, so be it. So the other objections that are being raised and I think they go in the same direction. So I think the objection is well taken as far as the chair is concerned and I will give the floor to the member states to keep intervening because this is not an issue of the chair. I’m repeating, it’s not an issue of the chair. It’s the Executive Board. And those that want the chair’s view, I have given my view. I think the objection is pertinent, but it’s up to the member state now to deliver and in that case I have to give the floor to all that are on the list. I hope you will understand that. I tried to move into something that I thought could help us. Okay, at this stage, table la rasa and I’m giving the floor to the list of member states that have asked for it and hopefully at the end we will be able to come to a conclusion. I have Venezuela next on the list. Venezuela, you have the floor, please.
Oui, Monsieur le Président.
Indeed, Chair. Can you hear me? Yes, yes, we can hear you. You have the floor, Your Excellency. Thank you. We have a very interesting debate being held over the last few minutes, but we’ve becoming... We’re becoming a bit concerned because we’re not quite sure in what direction we’re going. Now, we had asked for the floor before your proposal, but I’ll try to follow your last instructions. Indeed, it does seem right to us that all possible negotiations should be carried out with a view to achieving a consensus. It’s difficult for us. The interpretation will resume once the sound is reestablished.
Chambre d’élégation, je comprends presque une trentaine. C’est probablement dans une sorte de temps qui était proposé par les facteurs eux-mêmes. Ce n’est pas de créer... Ce n’est pas de créer un problème. Mais en tout cas, c’est pour assurer que l’on puisse continuer. Une décision ne serait-ce que minimale afin d’avoir des méthodes de travail qui soient propres. En tout cas, Monsieur le Président, pour l’adoption du tableau...
In any event, Chair, for the adoption of the table presented by the group or by the facilitators, it would be necessary that we establish working methods that don’t create new rules but that constitute an adaptation of the existing rules. The interpretation will resume when the sound signal is reestablished.
Aux circonstances, on l’a déjà dit, fin juin...
We have already said that at the end of June, we do not yet know whether states will be able to participate in a session and we need to assure all capitals that their participation and their ability to participate in decision-making will be legitimate.
Problem of translation into English. Translation into English, is that corrected? Is it okay? I’m being warned that we have some difficulties in the translation into English. Is it okay? English translation?
The chair is suggesting there’s a problem with interpretation. Everything that could be interpreted was interpreted, but what was incomprehensible was not interpreted. The chair in French. I just interrupted to make sure that interpretation was working, said the chair. But you now have the floor again, Your Excellency. Thank you, Chair. I’ll try to return to my conclusions to begin with. We believe we need to move toward a consensus. We believe that the table presented by the facilitators, by the Africa Group, is acceptable. We’re in a multilateral environment. We think that negotiation is still possible, that is why. We are part and parcel of the United Nations system. If we all apply a spirit of solidarity to our multilateralism, we believe that the existing rules can be applied. We believe that there should not be creation of any new rules but rather adaptation of the existing rules to the new circumstances. As I said just a moment... As I said just a moment ago, we believe that with the right will, a consensus can be reached. I believe that getting too much into procedure on the basis of the proposal of the facilitators would be contrary to our spirit of multilateralism. So I believe it is important that if there is not a consensus, you could suspend the debate and find some immediate ways in order to make sure that negotiation is not conducted in a virtual way that is not beneficial for us. Delegates cannot all follow what is being said. So if we continue with this way of discussing, then my suggestion would be that we break off on this point and that you be very clear as to the contacts that can be taken in order to find a way that would be favorable for all. But let us avoid virtual negotiation per se because the conditions are not sufficient for that. And we do need the right working method. Thank you, I'll stop with that.
Okay. I think they are following what has been said by the distinguished delegate ambassador from Venezuela. Also, member states like Argentina, they also wants to know what will, what will be the decision of the chair on this issue. I would like to say at this stage that first of all, we have no intention to have discussions here online. We don't want that. We want a decision that is consensual. And we believe that on this item, there are points that we could, probably, we could reach a consensus. So I will, I will encourage, I will, at this stage, ask that we stop the discussion on this point. And we take from now to when we come back at 3:00. And during the break, we try to see whether the board can accept to have either the African group proposal, forgive me for saying African group, I don't have any other reference because there's no reference on that text. Either we can use it and try to build a consensus during this time of the break, that we can want to discuss that. Or we just say we don't want at all to discuss anything, whatever position we want to take. But during the break, please, let's try to come up with something that we can agree on. But I don't want, I will not, if you want to know my view or my decision, those that ask for it, I don't want here that we start the debate on the DRs and the decisions. Let's try to go now on this point, at this time, and try to have, try to think how we can proceed. But we still have about 30 minutes. I'm a bit worried because we have a very important point, which is the impact on COVID, which we also, we need to invest important time. And we really want to also listen to the Director General on the next item regarding 209, the item four. So I have, before concluding, I had, I don't know, I think they are point of order, I think, San Lucia, Tunisia, before lunch. So if it's a point of order, I will probably recommend that we do not start a discussion here because that's not the issue, the discussion on the amendment. Either, what I want, I'm not even putting anything on the board. It's just, we all have the, what the facilitator have submitted. The document we are referring to here is the submission from the facilitators. And I understand from GBS that these documents were distributed to all the member states in the two languages. We may see during this break whether we want to give the room to see whether we can have some agreement on this text. This is my proposal, this is what I see. Because I feel that the point of order raised by France is important, which was supported by other countries. And we don't want a debate, everybody wants a consensus. Now, I will give the floor to San Lucia because I think that it's a point of order. But San Lucia can correct me whether it's not. They can make, they can take the floor at this stage. And after that, I will want us to pass on point four, which many have been relating to. And when we come in the afternoon, we can take the whole afternoon to discuss the point three, which is a very important subject. So following San Lucia, and if there's no objection, to give time for negotiation offline and to try to come up with something that is consensual, we will listen to San Lucia. If there is no point of order, stop there, come at 3:00, and try to continue with the point three, which is a very important subject. If it's accepted, it's a proposal. San Lucia, you have the floor, please.
Oh, cool. Thank you, Chair. Chair, it is a point of order because I do not agree to the closure of the debate immediately. I think we can continue the debate until the end of the session. There is little time left. I have been waiting for my turn to speak. You said that I was next speaker more than an hour ago. I have been waiting calmly for my time to speak. While an army of points of orders were made, most of them could take opinions and debate on substance of methods of work and not at all points of orders. So I really think we should be given the opportunity to speak. And then we can go during the break and see whether we can reach a consensus and come back at 3:00, hopefully with a consensus. But I don't think it's useful to, 20 minutes before lunch, stop the debate. I think you should listen to those who have to say something to say. We've been waiting very patiently, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I have Tunisia also on the point of order. Tunisia, I think, I think it's a point of order for Tunisia. Tunisia can take the floor. Monsieur l'ambassadeur.
Monsieur l'ambassadeur, please. Tunisia, you have the floor. I have a, there's a question which I would like to ask the different colleagues and yourself, Mr. Chairman. What might happen before we resume at the 3:00? What could possibly happen in order to solve this problem? Let me just, just we ask a very clear and direct question that we answer on the chat. And that way, we'll have a clear idea as to what the member states think. I think that the way we've got started, I don't see how we change our opinions. Anyone would change their opinion and this, and come to a decision. So I think that you should ask us a clear question. And then we will answer online on the chat, literally gain time. And then you'll have a clear idea as to what the member states think. That way, we won't run the risk of spending the whole day discussing a question, which is very legitimate, all the opinions are legitimate and respectable. But we're going to have to make progress. So please ask us a clear and direct question. We can answer the question. And then when we come back after lunch, you will know where we're heading. Thank you.
Yes, I will now reply, and I think the question raised by Tunisia is also pertinent, and I will reply. The question I would like to raise is whether we could use the submission from the facilitators, which include the, a decision, consensual decision from Group Five. Could we use this as the basis of trying to come to a negotiation? We need clarification on that. We have listened to all the arguments, including the point of order. And the point of order, they don't stop on the same issue. Because if we cannot use these, then the executive board has to make a proposal, how to move forward with respect to point two. So if we cannot use it, can we use it as the basis for reaching a consensus? Yes or no? If the view is that we should not use it, what is your recommendation? So you say yes or no and recommendation. That's what I would like to recommend, that we take that question and we come back at 3:00. But you can reply by, on the chat, please, on that question. Can we use it at the basis to try to reach a consensus? The submission from the facilitators? If not, what should we do? And if yes, we will use it at 3:00 o'clock. I hope the question is clear. And on that point, frankly speaking, I think we may be discussing here. We can come back at 3:00 and continue discussion on point two. The reply could be done on the chat. And because I would like to give the floor to the Director General to clarify point four, I think we can have a brief explanation on point four. And then at 3:00, when we come back, hopefully, we'll be able to deal with the two heaviest items that are, that are very important. If there is no objection to that, please, can we now give the floor to the Director General on item four, the 209th session of the executive board, update from the secretariat on the prevailing situation at headquarters and possible impact on the 209th session. Madame la Directrice Générale, vous avez la parole.
Madame Director General, you have the floor. If she has mind with this. Thank you.
While we're waiting for the Director General, Poland was asking what document are we referring to? The facilitators, they sent to the chair, copied to all the member states the conclusion of the reports, which also include the decision which was submitted, one email, I think, from the vice chair from the African group. This has been circulated to everybody else. I see the Director General already, so I hope I have replied to the question from Poland. Madame la Directrice Générale, vous avez la parole concernant le point quatre.
Madame Director General, you have the floor regarding item four. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President of the General Conference, Your Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, on this item number four and the conditions for feasibility of the 209th session of the executive board at the date that you've set, the end of June for the time being, we would like to provide the most up-to-date information we can in a situation which, as you know, is changing. Let me give the floor first of all, if you will allow, Mr. Chairman, to the DG for Administration and Management, who coordinated this work. Thank you. Thank, thank you. Orsa.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And good afternoon to all distinguished delegates, colleagues, and to you, Mr. Chair. And thank you very much for this brief opportunity. So the document that we prepared, and as just outlined by the Director General, this was done based on the very latest assessment of the sanitary situation, document in 6X EX4 INF. And in this document, we are proposing that a in-person meeting could be held, provided that sanitary conditions were very strictly respected. We all know that we've been living through a very difficult period with unprecedented health situation and that all governments, including, of course, host government in France, have been taking steps to try and combat. And the organization here has been following those guidelines very closely at every step. Based on the latest information, whilst the recommendation for staff and for employees who can telework continues to be that they telework, the information we have is that whilst public gatherings, so outside public gatherings of more than 10 people are not permitted, provided an organization, whether that be a company or international organizations such as UNESCO or a school or any, any other facility, provided they can guarantee that measures are taken to, to prevent or at least limit the risk of transmission of COVID-19, then a gathering could take place of the magnitude of the executive board, provided a number of conditions were met. And in the document, we set out what those conditions would be. Distancing, physical distancing of 1.5 meters, frequent hand washing, availability of, and wearing of masks within the meeting room, medical facilities, of course, available and protocols available. And in the document, then, we also set out the capacities that we are suggesting would be the maximum capacities in the UNESCO rooms that could be used for the, for this board session. And if there are any questions for, for me, please do not hesitate to, to ask, I'll try my best to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I would like to congratulate the secretariat on this point because we see the effort that has been done in order for things to be ready, starting with the issue of the six official languages. So at this stage, I really would like to congratulate because I have witnessed myself the, the work that you are doing. Thank you very much, and I think that will help all of us if UNESCO is put in a situation where we have to work with the advancement of technology. For clarification from the secretariat, because this issue has been coming, although we were not on this point. I think I felt that some member states refer quite a bit to the next meeting, the 209, that will be in Presencia. But I also heard a lot of questions, which I would like to try to, not from me, but from the previous discussion, when we were not discussing this item. There is a question as to will in Presencia, let's say, end of June, beginning in July, mean that all the member states could be in the same room as we know in the past? Because based on your presentation, does not seem to be the case. If there will be a limited number of member states that can be in the room, let's say, room one, how do we deal with the excess, those that cannot be in the room? Will this not imply to certain extent an hybrid type of meeting, where you have some in the room and some not in the room? The second question I heard from the past is that both the report from WHO and what we read, we see that the situation in France, in Paris particularly, is getting much better compared to before. And we all hope that by July, it will be much better. But we are not sure that in the international community, this is the case. Therefore, can we guarantee that in July, people will be able to fly from the, all the corners of the world and come to Paris without any difficulty? If we cannot guarantee that, how do you see the possibility of having a virtual meeting? So I was trying to summarize the question from the previous session because they may be relevant as we proceed. And after your intervention, I will give the floor to those that want to intervene. So I will ask those that have raised their hand if we can take this out because it's for the item two, I'm asking the secretariat, so that those that want to intervene on this point immediately, before replying, secretariat, I have been, China has been willing to intervene. I think it's like a point of order also. So I would like to give the floor to China. Then I will come back to the secretariat to clarify before opening the floor. Meanwhile, I'm asking the secretariat to clean the screen so that those that want to intervene on this item, we could see which countries are. So I will give the floor to China before coming back to the secretariat. China, you have the floor, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Your Excellency.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon and everyone. We see actually a number of delegations raised the point of order, and I insist on, including Philippines and San Lucia. and I insist on, including Philippines and San Lucia. I think the point we want to raise is actually about the, about the interrupted the process because of the invitation to point of order with reference to the Africa proposal. And in our interpretation, some of the point orders were not really point of orders, but perhaps because of the virtual mechanism that does not provide other means to clarify, lots of intervention, they were basically something that really disrupted the process of the earlier discussion. We concur with the Russian delegation’s view that we have been waiting very, very patiently for our turn to speak. And now it seems that you want to cut those lists short. That would be unfortunate. We, I mean, we are sensitive to the fact that the time is of essence, but we insisted that we should be given the floor to speak on the subject that has not been concluded. So whatever this afternoon we are going to do, we think that the speakers, those on the speakers list and those raised point of orders should be given the floor to speak. I have no intention to interrupt the Secretariat’s briefing to all of us. We think they are very important. But I think there should be measures to allow this current item to be thoroughly, at least as far as the speakers list being exhausted, before we move on to other items. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I know that Philippines also had a point of order, and I think there are others that also had points of order. I ask a question so that we can try to see whether from now to three o’clock, something can be improved in terms of the question that I raised. But by no mean that mean we are cutting the list short. It means that, no, no. It means that when we come at three, we will give the floor to everybody that asked the floor. We just hope that during the break, probably based on the different point of order that are being raised, taking into account that we want to have a consensual basis to move forward, we hope that from now to three o’clock, because we have only 20 minutes left. So we felt, I felt that we could gain time by finalizing Item Four, which is a very important also document of information. And then we come at three o’clock and start where we left, meaning I have the intention of giving the floor to all the member state if from now to three o’clock, we are not able to move forward. I will respect that list and I will follow it. But for now, after listening to the, I know Philippines, I will give Philippines, when we come back at three, I want Secretariat to take the note because Philippine was next on the list. There are also other member states that raised the point of order. So we will come back at three, and I will respect the list. I will follow that list. But I just hope that during the break, we will be able to really move a little bit into a consensual conclusion. With all your permission, let’s try to listen to the Secretariat on the question asked. We’ll give the floor, although I don’t know how technically this will work. I hope the Secretariat, you can take the list that is already on the screen so that we can clean the screen, we finish the Item Four. And when we come in the afternoon, I want to respect strictly what is on the screen. Thank you very much. Secretariat, you have the floor, please. And at three o’clock, we will come back, starting with the list of that I have already closed on the screen. The Secretariat, please. Can you clarify and we finish Item Four, please? No, no, no. This is the whole list. Cuba is also asking for a point of order. Let me say that Philippines, Cuba, and I think there was Jordan, the three of them, they asked for a point of order. Since it’s a point of order, I will give it. But I hope what I propose could help us to finish Item Four. And if the point of order is on Item Two, of course, I have to give you the floor because I don’t know on what item you are asking for the point of order. But in that case, I can, if the, all the members agree on that, we could give the floor to the Philippines, Jordan, and Cuba. I hope that is not, it will help us to advance on Point Four because now, you see, I’m having also Benin and Spain on points of order. Please, if these points of order have to do with Item Two, we are coming at three o’clock for, to continue. And we can raise this point of order at three o’clock. Now I would like to give the opportunity to the Secretariat. Now, if your point of order is on Item Four, then I can give you the floor now. But if the point of order is on Item Two, let’s give equal chance to everybody. We come at three o’clock, and we can start with that point of order. I take it that the point of order is not on Item Four? Or is it? Any, I will ask now to Philippines, Jordan, and Cuba. If your point of order is on Item Two, will you agree to do that when we come back at three? But if it is Item Four, then I have to give you the floor. I think that it’s on Item Two. Is, is it what?
In general, on procedure in general.
Which country?
Philippines.
Okay. Now I give the floor on Philippines because Philippines is clarifying that they have a question on the procedure in general. Philippines, you have the floor, please. I give the floor to the Philippines. Yes, you have the floor. We can see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, for giving us the floor. We had raised our hand many times earlier, and I think there was also a technical difficulty with our microphone earlier. But on procedure in general, sticking to a point of order, we think it would be very, you told me, Mr. Chairperson, if we do follow the rules of procedure and all those delegations which raise orders, be given the floor as a matter of principle on all items. And secondly, a speaker’s list would be necessary so that we could see where we are on the list, so delegations can prepare adequately in time. And thirdly, the program of work seems to be unclear, Mr. Chairperson. We seem to be skipping between items. We had no idea that, for instance, Item Four would be discussed before lunch, although we do see the logic in, we need to decide whether to have an in-presension 209th or not. And this could maybe help our decision on EX Two. However, we need procedural clarity and transparency, know which items will be discussed when, and that we can take the floor when we want to, Mr. Chairperson. So we implore you to please respect the rule, the right to rule of, to points of order, and also to have clarity in our schedule. We support your proposal to use the facilitated draft, in fact. And we urge you for during the lunchtime to reach out to delegations and see that if not, you know, we might be able to at least agree on a basis for further discussions when we get back at 3 P.M. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to give the floor to the Secretariat, but looking at the watch, we are now one o’clock. Therefore, instead of giving the floor on Item Four, I will, as requested by the Philippines and others, I will clarify on the way forward, the procedures, how we will proceed. The first point is that in few minutes, I will ask the Secretariat to read the list of the countries that were, has requested the floor to intervene on Item Two. That’s the first thing. These countries will be given the floor when we come back at three o’clock in that order, except the countries that would like to raise their hand on a point of order. So we will come at three. We will respect the list that is going to be read now by the Secretariat. And then any country that wants to raise a point of order in the afternoon can do so, and we will give them the floor. That’s the first thing. It will permit us now to conclude Item Two. Now, before breaking for lunch, I wanted to advance on Item Four. We have only been able to have the presentation by the Secretariat and my congratulating words to the Secretariat. We were supposed to now move into the question and answer by the member states. To have a clarity on how we will proceed, we come at three. We will start the debate with the list of speakers on Item Two. Item Four will be the next one because we couldn’t conclude. I thought we could do it, but now it’s late because it’s one o’clock. After finishing with Item Two, we can move to Item Three. Only, I stand also, I mean, I could be flexible because Item Three is a very important item. So I think what I was trying to gain with Item Four, I have not been so successful because the time has caught up with us. But I don’t, I want to give sufficient time to Item Three, the impact of COVID. So although the Secretariat has made a proposal, we have the information. I think Item Four, unless if somebody feels very strongly, we have been discussing Item Four, and we have had the chance to listen to the Secretariat. Let’s now propose, given the importance of Item Three, that when we finish discussion on Item Two, we move, I apologize, we move to Item Three, and then we conclude with Item Four, knowing that Item Four, I was trying to bring it before, but I didn’t succeed because we don’t have time, the time is against us. I hope this clarifies how we will move from now. Item Two at three o’clock, followed by Item Three, and followed now by Item Four, knowing that the Secretariat has already advanced information on Item Four. If there is no objection on this procedure, I will now ask the Secretariat to read the list of the countries that are going to intervene as we come at three o’clock on Item Two. You have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. The list of speakers on Item Two to be heard today at 3 P.M. is the following: Republic of Korea, Pakistan, Cuba, Grenada, Albania, United Arab Emirates, Saudi Arabia, Japan, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, Jordan, the Russian Federation, Indonesia, Benin, Bangladesh, and China. Thank you.
I think there is more on that list. On the screen. Please read it on the screen.
Yes, there’s some other countries that are right now on the screen. Ethiopia, And that’s all for the time being.
Is there any country that wants to intervene, and I didn’t hear their name? If so, please raise your hand so that we can also include them. Tunisia, Serbia, Who else? I see Equatorial Guinea also. Equatorial Guinea, After Madagascar, who? Okay. Secretariat, please, read this list again. All the countries from the start so that we know exactly who is going to intervene because after that list, I will close the list. So it’s very important that we have all the countries that want to intervene. Can you please repeat the list, please?
The list is the following: Republic of Korea, Pakistan, Cuba, Grenada, Albania, United Arab Emirates, Saudi Arabia, Japan, Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, Jordan, Russian Federation, Indonesia, Benin, Bangladesh, China, Tunisia, Serbia, Equatorial Guinea, Bulgaria, Madagascar.
Okay. Is there any other country that wants to intervene? Because...
Saint Lucie. Argentina.
We have read Ethiopia already.
Yeah, sorry.
Ethiopia is the second time. Okay. Now we have heard the list, read twice. And with that, I’m going to close the list of speakers. We will have to give the floor to all of them. And when they finish, the list is closed now. What? The last country on the list is San Lucia. San Lucia, it’s fine. It’s the last, it’s the last one. And who else? I understand that on the list, Italy will also be included. So, Secretariat, please take note of that because I’m going to close the list. And after that, we are not going to give more floor. We will close the list. We have given the opportunity to all the member states to raise their hands. It will, with that, we will close the list. So when we come in the afternoon at three o’clock, I will begin giving the floor as the list that has been now closed. And I will adopt and approve this list. We’ll give the floor. They will all intervene on Item Two. Then we’ll try to see how do we get to a conclusion. When they will intervene, they will also try to guide us, taking into account the objections that have been raised and everything. At the end of that, we will move to Item Three. We’ll have the debate also. After Item Three, we will come to Item Four, knowing that we have already advanced a lot on Item Four. Is there any objection? I think we are at lunchtime. I can now conclude the discussions of this morning. And I wish you good lunch. Let’s come back at three. We still have a lot of items in the agenda. And during lunch, please, let’s try to contact each other so that we can come up with something that is consensual, that will not require discussions online here. If we can move in that direction, that will be extremely helpful. Thank you very much. Have a nice lunch, and see you at three o’clock.